All right, if I could at this time, I'd call on Lieutenant Junior Grade Colton Newham and Ensign Elijah Brock to lead us in our pledge. Please, please, Brock.
Ready, set, three, say, arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms, face, order, march.
Thank you, Philip. I'd like to call the board of the March 20th, 2025 regular meeting of the Coffee County Board of Education. At this time, Mike Taylor from the Spartan Baptist Association, if you can give our invitation, please. He's also known as Big Mike in his name.
Thank you, brother. Let's pray together. Father, thank you for this day, and I thank you for these in this room today and the representation they have of our community. Lord, I pray for our children, our teenagers, as they're in the schools here. I pray, Lord Jesus, that you bless them and encourage them in these difficult days. And Father, in this room today are represented families and circumstances and situations that many of us don't know about, and it's deep in their hearts, and they hurt for certain things. I pray, Lord Jesus, you'd meet those needs and touch them, Lord Jesus, where it hurts right now. And I just want to thank you for these dear servants of our community, and I pray you'd bless them and encourage them. And, Lord, use this meeting for your glory in this time in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mike. All right, board members, just got the new agenda printed, the senior agenda there, need a motion for the adoption. Mr. Jowers, a second. Ms. Jowers? No relation, no. Not correct. They might have shared some formative. But, um, need to get a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Thank you all.
Dr. Leece. Great, thank you, Mr. Preston. Our mission is destination graduation, college career and life, and I can't believe that we're with March, we're gonna be on the stage before we know it handing out diplomas. So, we're almost at our destination this year. Vision, creating a stronger community through an equitable and excellent education for every student, and that's what it's all about, an excellent education for every student. Support of culture and climate, we have special recognitions tonight, and number one, we have dare officer training. And Chief Chris Elrod is gonna come forward, tell us about that.
Hey, y'all will step on up. Hey, thank you, board members, Dr. Leece, for allowing me to talk just a minute about our nearly, our nearly sworn dare officers. I, I wanna cover a couple of things about dare training. Dare training talks about drugs and, and we don't make huge drugs going in there, but it also talks about choices and consequences, and it talks probably more about that than it does even drugs, and it touches on gangs, it touches on a number of different things. But while I'm so excited about these guys going, one, they volunteered to go. I asked all the officers who wanted to go, these two volunteered, said, hey, would you probably go? So, I was excited about that. And this is not an easy class to pass. It's about a week and a half, two weeks, two weeks long, they were in the line, it got snowed on while they were there, and they were stuck, they were, they were driving really, really bad in snow, they were trying to get home for the weekend, so. But during the process, there's a lot of long hours to this. You get up at seven o'clock in the morning to start class, you're going really, when I went through, we went through midnight, one o'clock in the morning every day. So, it's not the average training class, and I'm very proud of them. They graduated, Officer Crockett and Officer Wilson both did really well, they reprimanded us really well. Again, not an easy class. Officer Crockett actually graduated as the star student in their class. I was very, very excited. So, with that, starting this fall, I kinda pulled the principles on when they wanted to start, and since we've lost so much instruction time this year, we decided to wait till next school year to start our dare program back. But starting this next school year, the three of us will be dare officers. They will be doing it most of the time, but I can't promise y'all they'll do a class here there too. So, um, do you want me in congratulating them, and I certainly appreciate the job they do.
Thank you, I appreciate you. Is she willing to go?
She is, yes, sir. Can you? You come on in.
Our next recognition, we have Coach Steve White here, our athletic director from Coffey High School, and he's going to present our girls' basketball program.
Yes, I'm back again. Yeah, we'll be honest with you, it's been sports going well, I hope y'all grow tired of seeing me. But it is my honor and pleasure tonight to recognize a great season by our girls' basketball team, 27-2, region 2, 5A champions. They had this community more excited about girls' basketball than I've ever seen, and I'm so proud of these folks. So, I'm gonna call up to the podium, the Region 2, 5A Coach of the Year, Coach Tasha Kellogg, and she'll come read you in on all the good things that happened with Coffey Basketball.
Good evening. Um, I want to say thank you, Dr. Leece, thank you to the Board of Education for inviting us tonight to share our exciting news and our insights about Coffey Girls' Basketball. As Coach White said, I'm Coach Tasha Kellogg, the head girls' basketball coach, and I'm over basketball operations for sixth through 12th grade. Um, our girls' basketball staff, we have, I have a team of six dedicated coaches. Uh, my middle school coaches is Sherona Riley, she's here with me tonight, Greg Zachary, Kasia Bonaparte, my ninth grade coaches, Yashica Wilson, and my JV coach is Makaya Franklin. Um, seniors, this year we graduated, we will graduate six seniors from our program, Tyrianna Woodgett, Samaya Hansley, Ashley Watley, Mahendra Simpson, Delicia Young, and Jasmine Fernandez. These girls have been involved in our program since middle school and have significantly contributed to our success this year. We are grateful for their commitment and their leadership. I wanna talk a little bit about our middle school program because that's the foundation of our high school program and what, um, we become. Our middle school program has two teams, sixth and seventh grade makes up one team, and eighth grade makes up a team. We are, we are proud of the hard work that these kids put in. Our middle school program is centered around basic fundamental basketball skills to prepare them for high school. These girls put in a lot of work to get better and get prepared for high school basketball. Our word for, um, this year's theme, if we had one, was uncomfortable, and for most people, that sounds like something bad, but for us men, um, we get better. If you're uncomfortable, you get better. So, in every situation, we reminded them of being uncomfortable, um, because we wanted to be better than what we was, um, last year. So, that went, that was from wearing uncomfortable t-shirts every day to practice, um, saying it a million times a day, you know, but they, they started receiving it, and they started showing through our practices, through our, um, fourth block weight class. So, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about the uncomfortable process, and it was part of building the top level basketball program that we did this year, and it didn't come overnight. Over the years, my staff and players have committed to, we have ball workouts, we have spring workouts, we have summer workouts, the month, um, the whole month of, um, June, and I'll talk to you later about that, and we have fourth block. Our fourth block weights have been a tremendous asset to the growth of our program and what these girls have put in to getting better. So, I am so thankful and grateful that you guys granted us the opportunity to have my girls for fourth blocks for weights, so that, that's just been tremendous for us. Um, in the summer, we participate, we basically play basketball the whole month of summer. We travel to other schools and we play and we travel to camps, we go to LCA. This year, um, we went to GBC Live Camp, that's a camp that you actually have to fill out an application for, and you have to be accepted. It's in, um, it's up there in, in Emerson, Georgia. It's, it's in Emerson, Georgia, at the, um, Lake Point, that big facility, and when you go up there, you play top-notch teams from the Atlanta area. So, it kinda gives you an idea of where you are with your program and some things you need to work on, so that was a, a big asset for us as well. LCA Camp is fellow Christian athletes camp, and when we attend that camp, the girls do a lot of team building, and it also shows them how to be a fellow Christian athlete, and that's also a big asset to our program. Um, a reward for the summer, we always try at the end of the summer to, um, to take the girls to an Atlanta Dream, um, basketball game. This year, we went to see Atlanta Dream versus the Indiana Fever, so the girls actually got a chance to see Caitlin Carr play, you know, she was the big talk about women's basketball, so that was a lot of fun for them to get to witness and actually see what it's like to play in the WNBA game. Um, and like I said, we start, um, our, our workouts, when we go back to school in August, we immediately hit that weight room on day one, and we get to work, and then we start our fall workouts about mid-October, and then after that, we're into our season. And I wanna talk to a little, a little bit about all the hard work we do in the spring, fall, and summer, what it paid out to. Our finished product was, our record was 27-2, 27 wins and two losses after practicing for more than 6,000 minutes this season. Um, we were this year's region champ, region 5, 2A region champ. We advanced to the Sweet 16 in the state tournament, we was hoping to go farther, so, but that didn't happen, but that's what I told them, that's, that's what we're aiming for this year. We didn't get it done this year, so the upcoming year, we're hoping to advance farther. I wanna talk a little bit about some of our players and what their recognitions was for this year. Lexi Bradford was the co-region player of the year, that was a big honor. Uh, Tyrianna Woodgett was the defensive player of the year, Aria Paul, she's a 10th grader, she was the co-newcomer of the year, Jasmine Porter and Paris Riley were as the first team all-region, and Samaya Hansley and Leitner Edwards were unmentioned. And the last time, um, being region champs was big for us because the last time that Coffey Girls' Basketball was a region champs was in, um, 2009, so that was a big plus for us. I wanna talk a, a little bit about academics because one of our main focus is on academics. We always say academics first, basketball second. Um, we ask our girls to maintain 80 or above average. Um, we, we check progress reports, we check report cards every time they come out, and if they're not 80 or above, we're there to mentor them to get the help they need to make sure that they get their grades above 80. Um, and then our conclusions, uh, we have some upcoming events coming, we got our banquet coming, spring workouts in summer again, and I wanna say thank you to our season sponsors, to the Board of Education again, Dr. Leece, um, my principal Van Allen, uh, my ABC White and my assistant AD Grayheart, and to everybody that supported us. Your support and guidance have been invaluable to our program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And at this time, we have our school board appreciation, and, uh, board members run for the Board of Education because they wanna do this. This is not something that most people choose to do, quite honestly, and, uh, we appreciate your commitment to our boys and girls in Coffey County, and we appreciate your commitment to the Coffey County school system and our entire community and serving on the Board of Education. Other boards, other organizations that work in the community, they do important work. We have hospital boards, we have city commissions, we have county commissions, we have other boards and authorities in the community, but to me, the most important one is the school board because you are dealing with people's most cherished possession, if you will, their children. And so, we appreciate y'all's serving and looking after the children of Coffey County in our future, and without you, uh, we would be in a bad place if we didn't have people that wanted to participate and lead the board. So, thank you for what you did, and, uh, we just appreciate you. Benita, we have certificates in that we wanna give to the board members, and, uh, there you are, Mr. Brian Preston, Mr. Jesse Jowers, Leola Johnson, Jean Wade.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And Jaclyn Jowers, thank you for your service. All right, and you have some goodies, the schools each joined in and have provided some goodie bags for you, so please take it with you. I know in the past we've had them out where we all get excited to leave and forget to take it, and, uh, but please take it with you so that you'll have the goodies that the schools have provided. I do wanna take a moment to mention the, uh, the latest edition, the November-December edition of the School Nutrition Magazine for the United States. This covers the entire country, and if you turn in the magazine, you will find an article on page eight, What's Cooking: Feeding Hope, and this highlights the Coffey County Schools and the partnership with the Forsyth County Rotary that came down and brought the, the Boston Butts on two different occasions. There were many of our state representatives and state senators that participated, and community members and school system employees volunteered their time, nutrition workers volunteered their time, but fed literally thousands of families in Coffey County during the hurricane recovery. So, I wanna give you each a, a copy of that, and I wanna thank Don Lewis for organizing that event, and, uh, in your leisure time, please, uh, enjoy the article and the recognition that Coffey County Schools, uh, have gotten on a national level, so. All right. We have next our organizational and operational effectiveness. We have a strategic plan update from Ms. Allison Speight, our Director of Assessment and Accountability. So, Ms. Speight, before we go, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. We are excited about sharing our progress that we're making on our FY24 to FY28 strategic plan. Looks like we just started this process a couple of years ago, and we're already in year two, so we're excited to share the, um, progress that we've made tonight. So, again, we're in year two of our implementation, and, um, I'm so appreciative to work with the 15 professionals. As you can see, we have five goal areas here, student and academic success, communication and stakeholder, stakeholder engagement, high-quality workforce, operational and organizational effectiveness, and, um, supportive culture and climate. And so, you can see those facilitators there, um, it's definitely a team effort, and I'm so, again, appreciative of what they do to facilitate their teams. Each facilitator meets with their teams at least three times throughout the school year to review our, um, strategic plan, our action plans and initiatives, our goals that we've set out, and so they monitor those plans and work on those action steps to ensure that we're making progress as we intended. They communicate, or we all communicate those necessary action steps to our schools and departments to ensure that we're all moving forward as we have planned for our strategic plan for the next five years. So, goal area one, again, is about student and academic success. This goal area is led by, um, Ms. Kim Miller. The first, um, performance objective is about ensuring high quality, engaging curriculum, instruction for all students, and in that area, um, we are involved in implementing our district school visits. We've been doing those throughout this school year. Um, our leadership team, including Dr. Leece and all of our individuals here, have been going to schools and visiting, and we're proud to say that we've seen an increase in student engagement, high expectations for our students, and instructional-based practices. Learning focus is a big, um, push for our school system, and we can say that that framework is evident, we've been seeing those evidence of that in several classrooms. We're excited about the learning that's taking place. Um, literacy instructional training for all of our pre-k through third grade teachers is in progress and will be concluded in May of 2025. This includes our Georgia Learns literacy modules, or our language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling that we often call letters. All of those trainings are in place right now. Also, all students in grades K through 3 have been screened with our Dyslexia Springer, which is our Star Early Literacy, and this aligns with HB, um, 538 and standard our SB48, and that's our Georgia Early Literacy Act and our Georgia Dyslexia at First. In performance objective two, that focuses on implementing a high-quality assessment system, which includes all content areas, and we can say across the board, we're using universal printers in grades K through 8, and that's our STAR assessments, and we start with STAR Early Literacy for our youngest learners, STAR Reading and STAR Math, um, and that's implemented to provide us data so that we can customize our teaching and learning. We also have common assessments that are aligned to the Georgia State Standards for all content areas in a program called VNA, used to be called Illuminate, and those are being created to standardize teaching and learning for all of our students and bring consistency across our district to ensure that all of our students are getting quality education. Performance area three is about expanding our academy and workforce development model. We can say that we're proud to see an increase in our CTA E-pathway completions. You can see there in FY24, the number that Coffey High had, and as well as Wiregrass, Regional College and Career Academy, our dual enrollment is trending up, and our work-based learning is at an all-time high for our district, and you see those numbers there for both of those schools. Goal area two is about communication and stakeholder engagement. The performance objective, the first one, is about refining and sustaining effective communication processes for all of our stakeholders. Um, we have transitioned successfully from Kimbo to Parent Square, it's a new communication system that we launched, I think, over the last two years, right, Logan? The last couple of years?
September.
September. So, we, we started our Parent Square, and this one is, um, I guess it's a more engaging, more interactive platform of communication with our parents. We're proud to say that as of February the 18th, we have over 113,000 messages that have been shared with our parents, and about 45% of our parents are interacting with those messages, even either by responding with a message or either checking an appreciation option to show their, um, appreciative of the messages that they're receiving. We have also, um, created a drive communication plan. We wanna make sure that we're not over-messaging with our own different entities within our school system, so we are creating a plan for the district, the school, our academic coaches and teachers to make sure that parents remain attentive to the messages that are coming, um, and not churning them out because they're, they're getting the same thing over and over again. We're proud that, uh, we started a new online newsletter this year, um, called Sips of Coffee. It's an online newsletter that's been shared with all of our schools. We also share that with our business and industries, um, community partners, and so that we can ensure that all of our, uh, community partners, all of our schools, all of our stakeholders are aware of our accomplishments in the school system, as well as upcoming events. Um, initially, that team starts the year out by presenting at the Chamber of Commerce Luncheon to ensure that all of our stakeholders are aware of specific days, especially like parent-teacher conferences, so that we can make sure that they're partnering with us to release their work, just to come in and support their children at conferences. Performance objective two is continue to strengthen plans and processes for effective engagement with families. We have encouraged our schools to incorporate differentiated and impactful school-level family engagement activities based on their parent surveys and these assessments results from last year, um, and a survey has also been shared with our business and industry partners, like we said, for solicit feedback from them, so that they can cooperate with us and partner with us in, um, increasing our parent-teacher conference attendance, and we can even ask questions as, um, simple as, would you provide a room in your industry or your distance so that parents can jump online and have a virtual meeting with parents? And so, we've got some responses from that, and we're gonna share that out again this year, so that we can get more responses to see how we can strengthen that particular process. Objective three is about expanding and sustaining meaningful relationships with community partners. One of our initiatives is about, um, providing the academy, uh, academies of Coffey for our elementary, middle, middle school students, and so this year, we've worked with our new director, Ms. Walter Kye, to create an elementary-friendly presentation. Um, I heard, um, Chris Elrod mentioned earlier about the number of days that we've lost because of the weather. We've also kinda got the same philosophy and gonna launch that in FY26. Schools are working also to expand the types of speakers that, um, we're having for our students to come in, our career speakers for our students for presentations, and they're tracking those to ensure that we're having different speakers, different types of speakers from year to year. Goal area three is about a high-quality workforce, and the first performance objective is to retain highly effective people in all positions, and so we've got some great accomplishments here as well, as our teacher retention rate has increased to 89%, our certified teacher rate has increased by 4% to reach our 91%. And then there are great initiatives that's taking place. I know Mr. Mobley and, um, Benita Mott are doing a great job with our LEAD Coffey Aspiring Leaders Program, that we provide all of this guidance and training for our leaders, also assistant principal workshops to become, so they can become more acclimated with some of the criteria and the different processes that we have within the school system. Additionally, there are classified new employee orientation that's been initiated, a new teacher orientation that's been revamped, and our mentor program has also been restructured. Performance objective two is to evaluate staff and provide relevant professional learning. We're proud again of our wonderful implementation at all of our schools. We talked about our professional learning for our pre-k through third grade teachers. We have new ELA standards professional learning for all of our K through 12 teachers, and differentiated instructional training for our early learning teachers. Performance objective three is about recruiting and hiring high-quality people in all positions. Again, we are, um, still maintaining all our parent-to-teacher workshops and strengthening our partnership with our colleges and universities. We also have, um, student-teacher workshops, non-certified teacher workshops to help them understand the different requirements that's necessary to become certified, a new recruitment and hiring process, our platform, and, um, we refer to it as YAS, and then we also have, um, the, we advertise and share about opportunities that's provided through HB 385 for some of our retired folks who can come back and work for us. Goal area four is about organizational and operational effectiveness. Performance objective one is to ensure sustained processes for effective and efficient operations across all departments, and so that department has been reviewing and updating, um, job descriptions, it's an ongoing process, as well as standard operating procedures. Um, the YAS employee platform recently rolled into a new phase of including the demographic module and travel reimbursement module, and that's gonna be implemented in July. Performance objective two is about We also have student-teacher workshops, non-certified teacher workshops to help them understand the different requirements that's necessary to become certified. A new recruitment and hiring process, our platform, and we refer to it as YAS. And then, we also have the re-advertising share of opportunities that's provided through HB 385 for some of our retired folks who can come back and work for us. Goal area four is about organizational and operational effectiveness. Performance objective one is to ensure sustained processes for effective and efficient operations across all departments. And so, that department has been reviewing and updating job descriptions. It's an ongoing process as well as standard operating procedures. The YAS employee platform recently rolled into a new phase of including the demographic module and travel reimbursement module, and that's going to be implemented in July. Performance objective two is about ensuring and sustaining effective and efficient financial practices and fiscal responsibility. An annual system audit, school activity audit, laws audit for fiscal year 24 have all been completed. Procurement wellness policies, food safety review for the nutrition department has been completed with our Department of Education. Our 2026 system budget is being developed with the input of our principals and our directors. Performance objective three is about ensuring and maintaining safe facilities and healthy environments. And our semi-annual food safety inspections have been completed for 24. And our annual training with the staff has also been completed. School bus safety inspections have been completed for this year. Additional areas that have been addressed have been gang awareness training, de-escalation training, community-oriented policing, cultural awareness, firearms training, and use of force training. We've also been working on our five-year facility plans being developed with our Department of Education consultation. Finally, our last goal is goal area five, our supportive culture and climate. This includes creating and maintaining a safe and welcoming school climate that promotes learning for all. We're proud to say that we have increased our full-time SRO staff. And from that, we've maintained 86% retention rate from 2022 to 2025. They've increased their safety resources initiatives, including Evolve, School Dog, enhanced camera systems, administrative gang training, SRO officer weapons training, and officer de-escalation training. Objective two focuses on fostering the social and emotional wellbeing of our staff and students. And so, we continue to have full training and implementation of the Captain Kids Carts at all schools, which has been a great implementation for our school system. We continue to expand the Know Your Worth initiative. We started our school year off with a Know Your Worth presentation by Marty. In school she was Marty Smith, what's her last name? No, uh, what's her name?
She was that.
Is she still Smith?
She's Smith now, she was.
Okay. But she did, started our conversation out this year. And that really was a touching presentation that got our schools, all of our employees more acclimated to the Know Your Worth effort and just build that heart for compassion for our students. And we continue to monitor our teacher retention positive trends, teacher retention with positive trends that are continuing that we mentioned earlier. Performance objective three is about creating a cultural high expectation that celebrates successes throughout the district. So, our schools continue to prioritize our monthly core of the staff and student recognition programs and celebrations. Again, we have implemented LEAD Coffee Aspiring Leaders and assistant principal workshops. And we also have implemented the highlight recognition tool. This is for staff affirmation and recognition for the different things that we call it, catch somebody doing something well and you celebrate what they're doing. So, we celebrate each other throughout the school district. And finally, as we complete the second year of our strategic plan, we remain intentional about ensuring that all of our initiatives will be successfully reached for our five-year period to accomplish our mission and our vision for public high schools. Now, again, I was facilitating for area two, but these ladies and gentlemen or for the other areas, so that there are any questions about any specific areas, we'll be glad to talk to you.
Board members, any questions for this lady?
I want to thank the goal area leaders, all of y'all. I mean, they just do it. Y'all just come together and bring your teams together and they work on these goal areas and improving the school district. And I know it's been, because I've seen y'all scrambling. It's in addition to everything else that they do to do this. So, thank y'all for managing that and pulling those teams together and doing that. So, thank y'all.
Thank you all. Thank you.
All right. And next on our agenda, we have the consent agenda with our minutes from our last month's meetings. Then we have our financial reports that were discussed at the work session. We have our FY25 capital outlay application for West Green. And we have the George Washington Carver ninth-grade resolution to begin the, basically the construction process and planning process with the Department of Education for this new school on that side. And then we have technology, Thought Exchange purchase, a purchase of a software package called Thought Exchange, the technology. And then we have public review of policy revision descriptor code JB CB, non-resident students. And that will sit for another 30 days, basically, until our next meeting. And then we will work towards approving that policy. Approval of policy revision on descriptor code DIB financial report. And this was basically a change to policy DIB to bring us into compliance with what auditors are saying we must have in that policy. So, that was discussed at our work session last month as well. And Jardine Stadium, so that's our consent agenda.
The board members, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Wade, second Mr. Jowers, any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor?
Next on our agenda, we have Jardine Stadium scoreboard. The superintendent recommends approval to move forward with the purchase of an updated replacement scoreboard for Jardine Stadium due to damage from Hurricane Helene. With consensus of the board, the scoreboard purchase will be included in the consent agenda for vote at the regular monthly meeting immediately following this meeting. Dr. Leece will present a proposal for a new digital video scoreboard at Jardine Stadium as a replacement for the current scoreboard that was damaged during Hurricane Helene. And I would ask the board to approve this.
Hey, are we, are you asking for an approval to move forward with the purchase? Or are you asking for an approval to move forward with the request for proposal?
We'll have to bring back the purchase once we have an actual purchase to make. But this is asking permission to move forward.
I'm rewording all that enforcement.
I want to get the motion right, that's all, that's just.
Yeah, it says move forward with the purchase of an updated replacement.
Well, that's your, I mean, that's your recommendation, but we can make the motion.
That's right.
On the floor. The board members, just so you're clear, you can, if you feel led to, you can make a motion specific to what you're, what you're asking about this recommendation.
This is a recommendation, go ahead and vote the purchase, right? Yeah, by doing this, y'all are saying we're going to move forward with purchasing a video scoreboard for Jardine Stadium, then we're going to price it out and go through the process to make sure it's good for the auditors when we bring back the actual purchase document. But if you decided that you didn't want to do this, you could always vote it down at that time. So, this isn't going to bind you, anything other than us go through the process to be able to come back with a, a purchase.
But you, they're actually just going to be voting to do a request, prices, request proposal, RFP. And so, y'all are prepared to send out an RFP.
Well, we haven't got it prepared yet.
Well, why not prepare it till I knew that y'all were going to allow us to purchase it?
You know what I mean? So.
I mean, they could come back, not approve the purchase, but they've given you permission to go forward with preparing a request for proposal. So, these various vendors are making proposals.
That's right.
All right. But nothing's being voted on in terms of purchasing anything yet.
Yeah, we can't spend any money without y'all's approval. Actually, we're. You asked him for the purchase. I'm asking for the purchase, yes, by voting for this. But I can't purchase it.
Really, you're asking for the board's approval to prepare a request for proposal where these various people propose a price of what they would do. And you'll prepare, your office will prepare that. And then they'll send that back and then you'll present that to the board to approve it up and down and probably take the low bidder kind of thing.
That's right, that's right.
So, really, the vote for a purchase sitting on the table now is the way I understood it.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at it that I don't want to go through the exercise. If I know y'all are all just want to go back with the, with the same scoreboard we got, we'll just vote that tonight and just do what we got. But I'd like to be able to purchase, know that if we're going to go through this exercise that we're not going to come back in here in a month after we've gone through this whole exercise and then y'all vote it down. You know what I mean? We're all asking to not make the decision. Yeah, yeah, either we're moving forward or we're not. If not, we'll just, we'll just, we'll just go back with the, let the insurance cover and.
Okay, so let, 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 just, based on what you just asked, you're asking us to replace the scoreboard. You're asking us to approve the purchase of a scoreboard, but there's nothing specific. I mean, you've given us an option, but you haven't said that's what we're going to buy.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? We're going to have the scoreboard, right? We got to have the scoreboard. Do we have to have the scoreboard that was presented on the PowerPoint this evening? No. Do we have to have a scoreboard? Yes, so that, boil it down, yes, we need to approve the purchase of a scoreboard.
If he comes back and shows.
Not this scoreboard.
Not this.
Next day.
Right, a scoreboard.
But we, and I guess the reason that I need to get the ball rolling is we got five months till football season. And there was a thought that if we do the video scoreboard, we could even have it anytime for graduation. Some of those scoreboards been to other.
Just the hurricane.
You just not bringing it to the board?
Yes, sir.
At the last minute. That's kind of like pressure, most people making this decision when we have the time. Well, I would have to see when this is last minute. Well, maybe it hasn't since October. Yeah, but you know what we've been dealing with, Mr. Terry? I don't think, yeah. All right, I guess, like I said.
All right, I need a motion to accept the recommendation of Dr. Leece to move forward with the purchase of a scoreboard.
A scoreboard, not that particular one. Is that what you're saying, Dr. Leece?
Yeah, but if y'all aren't going to approve the video scoreboard, we're only going through this exercise and we'll just, we'll just get a replacement. You know, exactly what we got up there. I mean, I would like. You don't think it'd be, well, I think it'd be nice because we'd have a little more time. Two on this, I mean, you just busted it out in the night, kind of, I mean, early in the week. Yeah. You know, that's, well, a little bit surprising. Yes, sir. I don't think nobody's going to deny the scoreboard. But you got to decide if you want a scoreboard or you want this scoreboard, I guess. What's the pleasure of board, y'all? How many votes?
Motion. All right. Second?
I guess what was he making a motion for?
That we get. Dr. Leece, to get a scoreboard. Well, what he's saying, he don't want to do that if we're not going to let him get the high-dollar scoreboard. Yeah, I would like to know if we're going to price out these, the, I mean, because we can just go back with the, with what we got, if, if, if that's what y'all want. Does that make sense? We even know what replacing the one like we got would cost. Well, the insurance has given us $57,000, so I guess if that's all we're going to do, that's what we'll do. I mean, it's a scoreboard like we had, you may all can get it for $57,000. It may be nothing there. That's right. So, I think that would make a difference in what we're thinking. I mean, we're going to do that for anyway. Yes, sir.
Good, good, Mr., can I make a question? Mr. Wade, amend his motion to approve Dr. Leece going forward to investigate, to get, get a scoreboard, but investigate the cost of a video, a video scoreboard also and include request for proposals and present that to the board.
Yes, sir, that's the pleasure.
I mean, they're, they're not voting on whether to get the existing scoreboard back. Could be $300,000, it might be $500,000, you don't know. But it's going to be more than insurance can be paid. And you've gotten some contributions and people willing to help on giving it to the young.
Yeah, the Gusham Club has put some in on it.
So, if you, if they give it here for approval, we're going to go forward and investigate.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is I don't know what y'all are going to do. I, I, do I have three votes, do you move forward with the video? If we don't, we won't do it, we'll just come back with what we got. I mean, that's.
Have you seen a scoreboard like that?
Yeah. Yeah. It says a lot of money for a scoreboard.
Hey, we made the money, a lot of money.
Yeah. I'll make the recommendation that you give us that you approve an RFP for a scoreboard replacement just like it is and a scoreboard, a video scoreboard. And we'll bring that back to the board. I don't know.
No, please, that, that, that request of 57, that was a fixed scoreboard.
Yeah.
That, that is, that will replace, that will fix the scoreboard. That, that's from the vendor that we purchased it from.
Okay, so we could replace that with whatever insurance we pay us.
Yes, that's, that's, that's the quote to repair that, that's it.
Hey, Dr. Leece, if I could add, because I, I sat out there. That scoreboard was already messed up. Before the storm, it was already messed up. We were fixing to have to spend big money on that scoreboard already. Because it wasn't working, it was, it was skipping numbers, it was hanging up. We were to the point of fixing to have to spend money on that scoreboard anyway. So, if you spend this $57,000, does that fix that problem too? So, you've got to wonder about that as well.
So, what did that scoreboard we got come from now? I don't know.
Electro, electromagnetic.
Electromagnetic.
Yes.
And that scoreboard. Well, you know, if we just want to put it to rest, I'll just make a motion that we just use the electromagnetic. We just come back with electromagnetic scoreboard.
Next one we have.
Yeah, we're just going to.
But I'm saying that what you heard your last recommendation was to get your RFP on what, to fix the one. That was the cost to go forward with that, which you already know what that's going to be. That's insurance or to investigate the, with RFP, the cost of a video. Wasn't that your recommendation, Dr. Leece?
Yeah, my recommendation was approval to move forward with the purchase of an updated replacement scoreboard for Jardine Stadium due to damages from Hurricane Helene. With consensus of the board, the scoreboard purchase will be included at the next, we have it ready for y'all.
Well, it was a, I mean.
You're not specifically saying this scoreboard. Video. That's right, but my point is I can't make this purchase anyway. I'd have to come back with board to, to do the purchase.
All right, the motion for Mr. Wade is that we purchase a scoreboard.
Give him the opportunity to get prices on the scoreboard like he's talking about. And then let the board, we're not deciding on buying it tonight.
No.
We're giving him the authority to look into it. Then we're going to come back and vote on it when he makes the presentation.
He had that already, but on that case, if you look into it, that is but. Yeah, but I don't want to waste our time. Well, we'll replace the scoreboard or something. I mean, I'm going to get replacement of the scoreboard. Yes, sir. You just need, he's looking, he has some options to look at. Yes, sir. I don't think we need a motion for you to do that, do we? Do we see it?
Well, that was a good motion, but Gene said to go get, and Tracy's clarified that that's actually the cost to fix it. But get other proposals, if you've got a proposal to the cost to fix it that you've got, but also give you the authority investigating the cost of a, a new scoreboard, video scoreboard. He doesn't have to, but it's not a minor expense and he wouldn't want to go forward with it to at least know that y'all were considered. And I think you could.
Hey, that, that, I'm just having the confidence to go forward with, with, that I don't, I just don't want to waste our time, our time's valuable, with chasing a video scoreboard proposal if it's not even got any chance of passing. That was kind of my thought.
Well, after you get the RFP, they'll know what the actual cost rather than estimate could would be.
That's right.
Yeah. I think the board should say for that, that's your motion, I mean, your recommendation, the motion, which Gene and Wade said, wasn't that your motion to play?
I still believe it'd be certain businesses in the community that'd be honored to have their name on that scoreboard.
I still believe that these certain businesses in the community would be honored to have their name on that scoreboard as a permanent sponsor, just like they always did.
Yes, sir.
You going to pursue that? Once this is voted in tonight, you going to pursue, find?
Yes, sir, because we've got the quote for just the replacement.
Yeah. But you going to pursue, find and get some votes? Fix him to help out this night.
Yes, sir, I'll go back and talk to Touchdown Club and see.
See if he can get out and talk with some folks.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll second the motion Mr. Wade has made in order to move this process forward. Yes, sir. Any discussion, further discussion? All right, all in favor to act on the motion? All opposed?
Hope.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank y'all. Sorry for complicating things tonight. We had it cleared, I guess, but uh, I'm just, anyway, all right. Next on the agenda is executive session. Do you need an executive session? All right, I have a recommendation to approve the personnel list, is presented.
Mr. Jowers' motion? Second? Second. Um, Ms. Johnson, any discussion? All in favor? All right, that's important.
All right, thank y'all.
We are adjourned. That commentary from the board, just appreciate the appreciation.